But the allegiance to the law of the United States and the Constitution, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' public meeting Tuesday, April 18, 2017. The time is 8:21. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, notice that this meeting was published in December 1, 2016, issues of the Nutley Sun and the Herald News, and the December 2, 2016, issues of the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall bulletin board, and a copy is on file in the municipal clerk's office. Commissioner Rogers. Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Petracca?
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Here.
All present mayor, and Commissioner Evans via phone.
At this point, I'm going to turn the mic over to Commissioner Petracca for a moment of silence.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This past week, unfortunately, we had one of our volunteer firefighters, one of the best in Nutley, suddenly pass away from what looked like to be a heart attack. Forty-two years old, he leaves behind his parents, his four-year-old daughter, and his beloved wife. Very, very, very sad to lose someone at that age so suddenly in our township. His name is Barapola. Please, a moment of silence.
Thank you, Commissioner. Minutes, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. We have Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for March 13, 2017, which is from the continued meeting of March 7, 2017, and also March 21, 2017. I need a motion.
Second.
Aye.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Communications?
Yes, Mayor. Holy Church, Holy, excuse me, Holy Family Church has requested permission to utilize Yanico Park near Park Drive for a community prayer gathering for five consecutive Sundays starting April 30 through May 28, 2017, from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Permission to utilize Yanico Park has been granted by the County Parks and Recreation Director, Daniel Salvante. I need a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And the Nutley Locks, Elf's Lodge, I'm sorry, 1290, has submitted a letter requesting permission to hold instant raffles from January 1, 2017 to December 31, 2017. I need a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for communications, Mayor.
Reports. Commissioner Evans?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I have a report for the COVID enforcement department for the first quarter of 2017.
Bills, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor. Bill list for Tuesday, April 18, 2017. Public Affairs, $113,392.81. Revenue and Finance, $2,430,601.11. Public Safety, $47,153.81. Public Works, $90,814.24. Parks and Public Property, $474,647,093. For a total payroll of $812,275.41. For a grand total of $3,968,884.21.
Mr. Bills?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for bills, Mayor.
Public comment on agenda items only. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or Presiding Officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of decorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Would anybody like to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only? Seeing none, can I have a motion to close the public comment? Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner, announcements. Any announcements? I have two. One, this Sunday at 1:00 p.m., the thriving survivors are going to have a ceremony. If anybody has seen, across from Town Hall in the county park, there's a flower bed and monument there. So they're going to have the ribbon cutting on Sunday at 1:00 p.m. Public is invited. In addition, there was a New York Times article in the real estate section on Sunday, which you can see online, or if you can find a copy of the Sunday Times. There's a very nice article about our town. Very well done. So those are two announcements I have. Before we go to public hearings, I'm going to ask Ray Serenelli Jr. to come and address the Commissioners on the budget.
I'm Ray Serenelli Jr. with Ms. Avaccia with the auditors for the township. Just going to give you a brief explanation of the budget tonight. I want to start off by briefly talking about the process. Nutley is in a unique circumstance because they receive transitional aid. So on March 21, 2017, the budget was introduced. It was then sent to the Division of Local Government Services. The DLGS will review the budget and determine whether transitional aid will be funded at 85% as it is in the introduced budget. It could remain steady or be further reduced. However, it's required to be at 85% for the introduced budget. The DLGS review and award has not taken place yet. So tonight, you'll hold the public hearing, however, you will table adoption until the DLGS review is complete. So tonight, the 2017 general budget, general operating budget. The budget is compliant with both the state mandated tax levy cap and the appropriation cap. The total budget is $56.426 million with an increase of $844,000 over 2016. The tax levy is $40.4 million with an increase of $1.521 million over 2016. It's important to note that included in the $40.4 million is $1.216 million mandated for the township library. Just in a detailed look at appropriations, many individual line items received little or no increase or reduction. There's really four line items that are the main drivers of the increase. The public safety salaries, group insurance, pension contribution, and reserve for uncollected tax make up $1.072 million of the increase. All other line items only result in $306,000 increase to the budget. The $1.3 million increase in appropriations is offset by a reduction of transitional aid that would be paid to the county and school in the amount of $533,000, bringing the increase in the total budget to the aforementioned $844,000. I think it's important to note that one of the other challenges, in addition to the reduction of transitional aid, is that there was a loss of miscellaneous revenue in 2016. Along with the reduction of transitional aid, Nutley lost an additional $300,000 of miscellaneous revenues from 2016. I'd also like to touch briefly on the 2017 water utility budget. The water utility operates completely independent of the general operating budget. However, it's an important piece of the operations of the town as a whole. The water utility budget itself is compliant with all state mandates. The total budget for 2017 is $4.614 million, or $62,000 more than 2016. The main driver for the increase is the funding of a $50,000 deferred charge. This is used to fund a capital ordinance over the next eight years. The capital ordinance was used to update the 100-year-old infrastructure of the water utility. Funding the $4.614 million budget is $330,000 of the $331,000 fund balance that's available at the end of 2016. Additionally, there's $4.284 million of rents. 2016 rents realized were $4.293 million. This makes budgeting $4.284 acceptable. However, if you look at the pack at the last four years and take an average of rents realized, it comes to $4.245 million, which means Nutley is operating very close to the margin in the water utility. The utility is very dependent on weather, depending on whether it's a wet year or dry year can determine how much revenue is brought in. If 2017 happens to be a wet year and water use is reduced, there's a possibility that the water utility could run a deficit during 2017. Unfortunately, the only way to offset these circumstances would be to enact a rate increase. I just want to reiterate in closing that the budget is compliant with both tax levy and appropriation caps and all other statutory requirements. Unless there's any questions, you can now hold a public hearing, take input, close a hearing, and table the budget pending the notification of the Division of Local Government Services.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Serenelli? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mayor, I do have one announcement, if I might.
Sure.
This Saturday, we're holding our annual Earth Day cleanup, and it'll be from 9:00 to 12:00 in various parks and at various schools, and I believe even at the Kingsland Manor. And then at 12:30, we will have a ceremony at Kingsland Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans, public hearings.
Yes, thank you. Tonight, we have two public hearings. The first one relates to ordinance number 3355, which is an ordinance that allows us to exceed the municipal budget appropriation by creating, by 1%, the 3.5% by creating a paper bank, the memo entry, that lasts for two years. So every two years, it expires. Each year, this is a recurring ordinance, we renew it. It's in the event that an extraordinary event happens and we need to exceed the appropriation cap. Fortunately, we have never had a need to use it. I don't foresee a need, but it's prudent to maintain the cap bank.
Would anybody like to be heard on ordinance number 3355? Cap. It's the budget, this is the cap bank. Seeing no one, can I have a motion to close the public hearing? Move it.
Move, move, motion to close.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
The second public hearing, and again, only a public hearing this evening. We will not be adopting this budget, given the fact that our state aid remains under negotiation and will not be known until sometime towards the end of May. So we're having a public hearing to meet a statutory requirement. As Mr. Serenelli summarized, we have a budget this year that is $56.4 million. Of that amount, we have $16 million in revenues, and we need to raise the tax levy $40.4 million. Included in the tax levy is $1.2 million for the Nutley Library, which is a statutory requirement.
Would anybody like to be heard on the municipal budget this evening?
For Remore 462 Chestnut Street. Mr. Scarpelli, on page, I only have two simple questions. Sheet 17. I'm just curious, the telephone is $150,000 last year and this year. Is that under contract? Is, we have one vendor service all the phones? Is that the way this works?
What was the question?
Telephone.
Telephone?
Telephone.
Yeah, that's secured, I believe, in conjunction with our IT department through Avea. And I believe they do go out and solicit pricing for that. I can get you the details if you're interested.
I'm just curious, because it was $150 last year?
It's under state contract.
He said it's under state contract.
I don't care if it's under state contract. I want to find out what they do, that's all.
I'm sorry, what do you want to find out?
I said, I don't care if it's under a state contract. I just want to find out what they do. It's the same last year as it is this year. And I was just curious because it was $150,000.
Hold on a second, I can tell you.
Well, with the background noise, I can hear.
Telephone, it is the same amount as last year, yes.
Same number as last year. I was just curious if it was a, if it was contracted, they do the whole?
No, I'm sorry, actually, I'm mistaken. It was a little less last year. Two years ago, it was $150,000. Last year, it was $139,000, and our estimate for this year is $150,000.
Okay, so, but it's the same vendor that does everybody?
Yes, mhm.
Information Services.
Mhm.
$190,000, is that, there was nothing for 2016. Is that a new department? Are those new hires?
There are no new hires in IT.
No, no, it's Communicate, it's listed as Information Services. Sheet 15E, towards the bottom.
It was included in the Department of Revenue Finance last year. It is now moved into the Parks Department for this year's budget.
Is that just one year?
Yes.
Yeah, as part of the reorganization, the IT has been relocated into the Parks Department. And there are no new hires.
And one last question. On your user-friendly budget, there's, Mr. Petracca, you have two part-time positions, supervisory positions in the police department. What are those positions for?
Two part-time positions?
Yes. That's what it looks like.
I would have to review that, but I don't, I don't believe I have any part-time positions in the police department.
Okay, the way it's written, it looks like there's two part-time positions.
I'll check it.
If you could get back to me, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Anybody else want to be heard on the budget?
Michael O'Dreah, 133 High Street. Mr. Mayor, our property taxes, since our budget is going to go up, our property taxes will be going up for next year. Am I correct on that?
You are correct, Mr. O'Dreah.
And how much percentage more do you think it's going to go up? The 2% cap? Is it going to hit the 2% cap?
The levy is going up 3.91%.
Okay, so that's going to affect our property taxes going higher. It seems like we go through this every year, and it seems to be nonstop. I notice a lot of homes are going up for sale in this town, and in fact, one of my neighbors is moving. He had enough, he's done. And I always say this, you guys got to cap and control and reduce your public sector spending. I know we just had a bunch of wage increases for public employees, even to the guys who work across the street. And I just want to make sure, when this budget is finally decided on, all five of you have to unanimously approve this budget in order for it to pass. Am I correct? Is that a yes?
It has to be approved by the majority of the board.
So it could be two to three, correct?
Supermajority.
Or it has to be five voting for it unanimously?
Mr. Janetempo?
No, it does not have to be unanimous.
Four.
You need four votes, supermajority.
Eight, four, supermajority.
Supermajority, correct.
Okay, well, the reason why I'm asking, I notice we have a gentleman on this panel right here who's running for governor. And I would strongly suggest, if you want the good people of the state to vote for you, it won't look good on your record if you vote for a budget that will raise the good people that you help govern their property taxes again. So try to convince these gentlemen here to do their part to lower our property taxes because it's truly getting out of hand.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yeah, please do.
Absolutely. I'm going to share something with you. I've been around the state, I've been all over the state, and I have not met a more dedicated, committed group of governing officials than I've had here in the town of Nutley. These people up here work their tails off, night and day, on weekends, they miss their kids' events, they miss their family affairs. To do what? To do the best they could to make sure that the quality of life in this community is measured up far beyond anyone else in this state. And let me add a couple of things. Number one, have you read the New York Times lately?
Yes, I have.
Let me finish. Now, I'm speaking now, okay?
Well, you asked me a question.
The fact of the matter is, is that this town, this township, has been very stable with regard to taxes over many, many years. And that's because of the hard work of the individuals up here, including their staffs. So when you talk about me or any one of these individuals purposely or having some idea that we just like to raise taxes on people, that's wrong. That's another point I want to bring up. We had a very serious fire the other day, all right? So where the, what happened during that fire? The fire department got there, the police got there, our emergency services got there. These people work very, very hard for the money they earn. And that's a quality of life service we don't want to see cut and go away ever in this town. You've got a gentleman here with the Parks Department, he's kept kids out of trouble for years. Why? Because he has expanded programs without the taxes going up that high. We've got a public works department that, you don't, at times, you don't even believe a storm came through this town. That's how, that's a measure of the work they're doing. I can't say enough about the police and fire. You've got a finance commissioner who's pretty brilliant at what he does. And I've seen that guy in action, and he's crunching the numbers. My point is this, you come up here, week after week after week, and then you have the audacity, all right? You have the audacity to bring my gubernatorial race into this picture, to try to convince them to do what? They're the most honest individuals I've met in government and in politics, and I'm proud to say that, and I will always say that. So I would like you to leave, one, my gubernatorial race out of this. This is not the time or place to discuss that. I don't have to convince them to do anything but to continue to do the good job they're doing. And yeah, I'm a little angry over that.
Okay, now, now it's time for me to, you know, answer this. As for the gentleman that's on the phone, you talk about Thomas Evans, since 2003, I noticed my property taxes have been going higher and higher ever since he's had that position. And as for that wonderful article in the New York Times, it talked about generations that lived here before. Just imagine if those generations could see what has happened to our town, Nutley, with all these brand-new apartments going up that you got, you find gentlemen and the zoning board and the planning board allow to keep coming up, and we're getting more apartments coming into this town. I think 44, 45 more in the past four, six weeks have been approved. If those generations could see what's happening to Nutley, I don't think they would like the way it's being led. Because what has happened to the generations that have lived here for years, they're moving out. And it seems like, from reading from that article, it seems like this board cares more about the new people moving in than the people that actually live in this town for so many years. So, and the reason why they're moving out is because this board keeps raising the property taxes. Maybe you guys can afford it, but not everyone in this town makes $130,000, $140,000, or $180,000, a couple of people in this town do. You know, some of us make $60,000, maybe $55,000. And you keep crunching us, and you keep forcing us to make these hard decisions after 20, 25 years of paying off our homes, time to leave. We're getting taxed out. Is that the reward we get for living in this town? You make us feel like we're the riffraff. We're not the riffraff. We're the people that make this town great, and we carry the burdens of this town on our backs, not your backs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Dreah. Anybody else like to be heard on the budget?
I'd like to be heard, Mayor. Mike, you know, you make some good points from time to time, and sometimes I agree with you, and sometimes I don't agree with you. But there's a couple of clarifications that need to be made. Number one, this board does not approve apartment buildings or anything like that. That's Planning Board and Zoning Board. They're quasi-judicial boards, all right? And they act based upon the testimony that's put before them. Number two, you talk about us raising taxes, all right? Did you forget that Hoffman-Laroche moved out? Did you forget that we lost a $10 million ratable? Did you forget that this board, as a unit, let me finish, and then I'll listen to you, as a unit lobbied the state with Commissioner Evans taking the lead, and we got $5.5 million in transitional aid light, as we refer to it, and that that aid is in fact probably going to be cut this year somewhere to the tune of $600,000? Did you forget that we also pay property taxes? I, myself, paying close to?
$22,000.
$25,000 a year, all right? And there's a reason for that. Because in this life, we have choices. We're here working for everyone, the people that make $180,000 and the people that make $50,000 and $60,000. We've all been in different spots at different times, all right? So to come to the mic and represent, all right, to the people at home and the people that are here, that we just act cavalierly and raise the taxes every year because we have nothing better to do, is just wrong.
Okay.
And I can appreciate what you're going through. I can appreciate what you're saying because we all have children and family members who are in similar situations, all right? But it's not because of a lack of interest or a lack of want, all right? If we can keep your taxes stable and even reduce them, which is near impossible in this day and age, based upon what's going on and real estate values being devalued, of course, we would do that, all right? So to stand there and represent to anyone that there's, anyone that's sitting up here who takes enjoyment out of raising anyone taxes one penny, just wrong. Mike, it's a misrepresentation, and you're better than that. You shouldn't do that.
Okay, thank you. But I do want to say one thing. As for the zoning, the zoning and planning board?
Yes.
I want to understand, the person who puts those people in those boards are the mayors. Mayor Petracca before, and I don't know if Scarpelli put anyone, I don't remember. But those people in those zoning and planning boards, I want to understand, they're realtors, they're financiers, they kind of benefit from the actions that they do to allow these more apartments to be built that eventually will put more kids in our school.
Mike, that, again, that would be wrong if that was to happen. If anyone was to benefit based upon a vote that they make, that is absolutely wrong, all right? And perhaps after the meeting, you should have a conversation with Mr. Janetempo, who can enlighten you on what, how quasi-judicial boards are governed and what their responsibilities are. Because what you're, what you're mentioning would be totally wrong and, I believe, illegal.
And the last thing you mentioned about Hoffman-Laroche, I said this once before on this, on this mic, I said, if, if you gentlemen would have led over the course of the past, I know, I know there were different, you know, sometimes you guys change seats, you're voted in, and one's a mayor, one's something else, and, you know, like, from the history. But if you guys would have led the town in a better, more financial way, more conservatively, maybe, I would think, a Hoffman-Laroche leaving wouldn't really affect us then. If you were cap-controlling the cost of running this town, a lot better. Maybe, like I said, a Hoffman-Laroche wouldn't affect us.
Mike, again, I can't speak for anyone else. I can speak to my budget, all right? And in my budget, in the different categories, all right, as a, as a general rule, every year, I return to the township treasury about $400,000, all right? So if my, if my budget goes up a percent or two, by the time I'm done at the end of the year spending only what absolutely needs to be spent, my budget is virtually flat every year. And I think, for the most part, the rest of the members here can say the same thing. If we have a particular public safety issue, or a particular public works, or wood, or a public affairs, or finance issue that we need to address, then we need to put the dollars there. Because talk is cheap, all right? You set policy in this world by where you put your dollars, all right, and how you spend them. them, and we only spend them when it's absolutely necessary and not a dollar more. So as far as planning for Hoffman-Laroche, Hoffman-Laroche is about, was about 10% of our tax base, all right? Hoffman-Laroche, a year before they closed up, represented to the board at the time that they were here forever when they put the skywalk in, if you remember, you're a guy that follows things, all right, and then what happened? Then we found out through other channels that they were leaving, it was a corporate decision, all right, that was way beyond our control, and it wasn't about this board or any other board.
Commissioner, Commissioner, just, just one point on that, too, it wasn't that Hoffman-Laroche and the pharmaceutical, only in Nutley left, pharmaceutical left, the United States for the most part, and especially our area.
Sorry for interrupting.
So as far as being conservative and spending very carefully, that is in fact what we do, that's why we're in the shape that we're in, as opposed to other places, all right, that are not as stable as Nutley. And despite everything that's going on, some things within our control, some things beyond our control, Nutley still is a desirable place to be, all right, and people are still flocking here, and read the New York Times article.
I did read it, I read it three times.
And it wasn't written by anyone here.
Some living Marino wrote it.
Written by outsiders, all right, who are just aware of the quality of life here and the type of town that we have, and how it's run, and how, for generations, it's been run by good, honorable people who do nothing but the right thing for this town and are about public service, Mike. So, please, don't misrepresent, all right, and make accusations that are false, all right? It's beneath you, you make some good points, we do in fact take into consideration what you're saying, and we think about how we can do things better, but to just blatantly paint everyone with the same brush is wrong.
Well, let the good people of this town decide.
Thank you again, Mr. O'Drean. Anybody else like to be heard on the budget? Seeing none, do you have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move it.
Yeah, yep.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Just a comment before we do that, um, just, I think some things are important. I, I listened to, you know, the comments that were heard, I want to echo Moore's comment that to paint a broad brush is a dangerous thing to do. In my experience sitting on the board, this board and the previous boards have had to address some very significant financial challenges to manage our way through that. Over our years, we had to absorb a million dollars to revalue our township which hadn't been revalued since 1977, and that would have done in 2005. We've managed our way through those assessed values, the dry and dry fairness, to make sure that we are staying close to what the true assessed values are for properties. We remember those early years, and we forget these things, is that there was a period of time, for about four years, when the state did not require any pension pay, which reduced our taxes. When I came in in 2003, we started to have to make those payments again. Nutley is one of the towns that is not behind in our pension payment. We do not have that future liability that many towns are dealing with today because we took a conservative approach and we have funded it. We've had to deal with, remember, very significant changes in the cost of healthcare, which has now contributed to, on the part of employees, which wasn't back then. We also had to deal with very significant federal changes in garbage rules that increased the cost of garbage removal dramatically. We had to absorb the increased costs associated with 9/11 to make sure that we can secure our sewage facilities and our water facilities, to make sure that as a community, that this board is able to provide for the health, welfare, and safety of the community, which includes not just police protection, but it includes providing fresh drinking water, being able to remove our garbage, right, in a safe way, for all of the benefits of our residents. In addition, you know, we had to deal with the loss of lotion, and Moore referred to this, and we lost a 10% ratable against our tax levy. That was $9.8 million at the time, which the taxpayers in Nutley have not had to absorb, because we've been managing our way, our way through that in two very, very significant ways. We've stayed below our caps, right, and managing according to the state. We fought our union contracts with the best of our ability to make sure we get a fair price for the benefit of taxpayers, always for the benefit of taxpayers. We've also lobbied for the state to provide us with state aid, and yes, it was a team effort which I led, but what was really important for that is it's the first time in the state of New Jersey that the state has given us 100% tax reimbursement on the municipal side, which means when we lost revenue, we were able to get $5.5 million to not only reimburse it for our municipal tax, but also to reimburse it for our school tax, which represents 50% of the taxes that the taxpayers in Nutley pay, as well as the county. That's a first, and we've been able to manage our way through that for multiple years, we're negotiating with the state again, and we continue to fight for the benefit of every taxpayer that secured that aid. In addition, we have seen development in town. What's very important about that development in our town is that we have introduced new taxpayers, we've spread the tax, so since 2013, assessments increases for new developments are over $63 million, which has now generated a $1.9 million annual annuity to pay taxes in town to help manage our way through this. I believe all of those things are combined, especially when you consider the fact that Hoffman-Laroche represented 50% of our commercial ratable in town, so we've avoided putting that burden on the taxpayers of Nutley because of the actions of this collective board and its previous members. We're very serious about the fact that we will manage our way through that, we argue over what we will spend, Moore rightly says that, that at the end of the year, what we don't spend, we give that. Every year, 75% of the tax fund balance that we generate is used to reduce the tax levy. If we didn't do that, this year, the tax levy would be $5 million higher because of the fact that this board collectively is managing those pennies very, very well. So I share that with you because, in my, in my view, the board has collectively, while we argue about different points, we are unified in the fact that we will never let a taxpayer in Nutley pay a penny more than what they need to. We argue over that, and we will not let Nutley slip as the way other towns have stepped, because once you slip, you can recover from it. I want to thank my Board of Commissioners for their cooperation and the support in getting the budget together. It hasn't been easy, we will continue to work our way through this until adoption. We have a motion to close the public hearing.
Need a second?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Resolutions. So resolution authorized Township of Nutley to sign an NJDEP Treatment Works approval application for the construction to Hackensack Meridian Health, Seton Hall, University Medical School, at 340 Kingsland Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, into the Township of Nutley Sanitary Shore. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Dominic Ferry, licensor operates here, I authorize to sign the applicable certification and consent sections of the NJDEP Treatment Works application on behalf of the Township of Nutley, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Whereas raffle applications have been received from the following organization, Nutley Elks Lodge, license number 2717, daily pull tab, daily from January 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2017, whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk in the police department, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are approved and the municipal clerk is authorized to issue the licenses, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks of the board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the board shall be allowed unless the mayor, presiding officer, or the majority of the membership of the board shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Would anybody like to address the board? Mr. Alessio?
Carmine Alessio, 81 East Center Street. I'm back again after a long winter. First, I didn't like the way Mr. Rogers spoke to Michael, who is a good citizen in this town. People who live in glass houses shouldn't throw stones, okay? It's a fact that Mr. Rogers is going to run for governor, okay? I had a run-in about a week ago, it was 80 degrees, and next door to me stunk like rotten grass, okay? That's because landscapers keep their grass there and they're, as a transfer station, and it stinks there. So I thought I'd go down and pay a visit to the health department, okay? It stunk, I guess, don't call me, don't make a joke about it, don't do anything, just stop this stuff, it's been going on for a very long time, okay? And after last year, what has happened down there, as far as, as the detriment, I'd like to know when this is going to stop, because that property is definitely illegal, I came here, I stated all the facts, statutes and all of that, and in response, what I get is, I'm going to have to go to court with, with Mr. Cofone, who owns the adjacent property, because my yard's a mess. Now, everybody seems to forget that for years down there, I was cornered, I, I can't even move down there, I'm so encroached upon by Mecca's wall, chopping my roots in my trees, pulling my, whatever I have in the front, he had to paint the wall, okay, do this, do that, I was washing my cars every, every day, getting clay, clay debris off of them, doing this, doing that, it's a total disgrace down there, okay? Then we had the gas leaks, last year for four months, I couldn't do anything, move anything out, I wanted to like get rid of a lot of stuff that's there to conform, I've been trying to conform for 25 years, okay? And we have a Board of Commissioners who doesn't flick the bill when a commissioner's system is supposed to be. It's not supposed for each of you to have your own kingdom and do whatever the hell yous want, okay? And, and raise it to the highest pedestal to do what you want to do for your department, okay? Living in glass houses, don't throw stones, I, I, how could you run for governor, Mr. Rogers, when it stinks next door to me, and you're telling me this and that, telling Michael, it's a health issue there, I would like it stopped, it wasn't there when that, my grandpa owned the house, and all of a sudden, it's there. Now, our system seems to pass the buck around the horn over here. Why? Because we're dishonest, it's my opinion that the code enforcement is supposed to do their job. Now, I'm trying to face Mr. Evans, he's never here, I mean, he was appointed, okay, he's following protocol from what I believe, and my opinion, is the essence of the mafia, okay? You guys just are up there, you're fitting, you're in the nice suits and all of that, but I take offense to what you said to Michael about the planning board, I was there, this girl's on the planning board, she wants apartments because she sells real estate. Well, I figure, when I say 99% of the people don't want apartments, I'll say Chairman Graziano, 99%, no, 85% of the people, we don't want these apartments, okay? And I could go through each and every one, I'll be up here forever, I totally disagree with what's going on over here, especially next door to me, it's illegal, all right? I come here, I try to be a gentleman, address the issue, people are eyeballing my property, my truck got stolen before the second storm, which is a nine-inch storm, in, in December 27th, it's worth $60,000 to replace. Somebody's eyeballing the truck, it was 60 feet, it's an inside job, I don't want to hear that it isn't, because I came up here and read the Deviazzi letter, and, and I'm knocking the board through the hoop over here, because I am disappointed, I do not want to be bothered, I'm self-employed, I want to be left alone, and I don't want it, I don't want to know anything, okay?
Mr. Alessio, your five minutes is up, Mr. Alessio.
My time is up, okay, I'll have to come back here. I would appreciate somebody addressing these issues with the stinks right next door to me, I really would, because it's, it's not, it's, it's not right. And it's my opinion that Tom Evans is behind the whole deal, and he's not doing his job.
That's enough, Mr. Alessio, thank you.
You're out of line, you're out of line, Mr. Alessio, that's out of line, your time is up.
Thank you.
Your time is up.
Thank you, you have a nice evening, see you next week.
Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Seeing none. Move Ted Turner?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans? Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Good night, everybody.
Time is 9:06.